Please believe it's on the House, Mr. Lynn Reese, if he will to lead us in prayer. Please don't forget to pray for Mr. Haliburton and also Mr. Heenan. I know you wouldn't, but just a reminder just to everybody to continue to remember them in prayer.
Spire heads. Holy Father, we hum the approach out of throne. We thank you so much for this day, the blessings of it, Holy Father, for this opportunity we have to come together, discuss business of our county. Pray to your Father that all decisions which we make will be pleasing, acceptable, and bring more, bring further and greater glory to thy name, Holy Father. We just ask that your Father be with each and every one of us this evening. We want to pray to your heaven, Father, for Mr. Heenan, Mr. Haliburton, Holy Father. We pray that blessings upon them. We pray to your Father that you'll be with the doctors which is waiting upon them, your heaven, Father, the nurses, your heaven, Father. We're so thankful that Billy has been able to return home at this time, Holy Father, but we just pray that they'll both continue to improve, Holy Father. Be with us on through this night and on through life. And most of all, to your heaven, Father, we want to thank you for your son, Jesus, that died on cross of our sins, which is most of the night, Holy Night, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, will you lead us in?
Let's play the flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Once again, thank you very much for being here tonight. Hello, Father. I was about to be mean that way, I'm sorry. We're going to ask Stacey if she will do a roll call of members present.
Mark Jones?
Here.
Lynn Reese?
Here.
Larry Edelman?
Here.
Billy Bass?
Here.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Here.
Carolyn Bowles?
Present.
Daniel Cripps?
Here.
Pam Billington?
Here.
Shannon Minchi? Matthew Inyard?
Present.
Ron Cowan?
Here.
Linda Nixon?
Here.
Billy Woodard?
Here.
Barbara Knackel?
Here.
Andy Rutherford?
Here.
Charles Kent?
Here.
Joey Nixon?
Here.
Tommy Bane?
Here.
Dennis Hackett?
Here.
Thomas Gibbs?
Here.
David Gross?
Here.
Frank Woodard?
Here.
I will tell you, Mr. Shannon Minchi texted me today, he's actually working today, the 911 dispatcher, and he couldn't get anybody to work for him today to cover his shift, so that's where he's at. And so, Mr. Reese mentioned his prayers, Mr. Billy Haliburton, I'm sure he can make himself up on here, he is home and he's still struggling with some things that I just continue to remember for him. And Mr. Heenan is up here at Smith County Rehab Facility beside the hospital, and he is making some improvements. Let's just continue to remember those, that's where those three are. And I want to say this tonight, Mr. Andy, or Andy, this will be your last meeting tonight. Mr. Andy's fixing to get married and he's fixing to move to Putnam County, and so he's going to, I think you're going to turn in your resignation letter soon. And so, I just want to make recognition of Mr. Andy Rutherford and for the time he's committed to the county commission, and good job, I appreciate you. All right, thank you. Congratulations on getting married and engaged. All right, Mr. Haliburton, Mr. Woodard, if you would this time, if you'll recognize those members that are here tonight from the Leadership Opportunity Smith County Commission.
I'd like to ask you guys to stand if you would, Mr. Bob Williamson, Jessica Webber, Mr. Keith Williams, and Mr. Carol Wilmore. They're part of our current adult leadership class, and I'd like to say this class is a pretty sharp pitch. Glad you're here.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks for being here tonight. Ms. Carolyn, will you give your poll, Lynn?
I brought two GetWell cards, and I thought we'd sign one for Mr. Billy and one for Potsie. And I'm going to start one, everybody sign them, and then maybe they'll come back to me and we'll get them to them. I thought it would be nice for them to know that we're thinking about them.
While you're outside, don't let this let you be distracted from the business that's hanging around. All right. Item number five is on the agenda. It's the presentation of Tennessee Smith County Community Rural Development Grant Analysis. If you look on page one of your packet, I just wanted to include this, this was in one of the meetings I was in recently, and it just tells about the amounts that have been awarded just recently through the Community of Rural Development Grant Analysis Program. This is through the Economic Community Development Program, for a total of $140,500. One of those, let's see, list, was the property evaluation program we went through on the industrial property. Carthage received a downtown grant, and I think this tourism enhancement grant, this property vehicle grant, is there, right, Mr. Woodard, $50,000. Work-based learning grant, which was through the Smith County School System. Norman, do you remember how much that grant was?
$25,000.
$25,000. And then the three-star grant for the years fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, that's been $10,000 each year, except for one, was it $7,500?
It was $7,500, then it went down to five.
Okay, all right. So I just, I want to take this opportunity to thank the state of Tennessee for the different programs that they do to help us with the grant program, so that's the reason I want to make recognition of it. Anybody have any questions about that? All right. Item number six, we've talked about this since January. Recognition of those from the parish and fair, and the, Ms. Heenan Parish from the fair, Ms. Junior Parish to the fair, and then the, Ms. Petit Parish to the fair. We tabled it in January because of the weather, they could not get here, I think it was, and then we tabled it in March, and I thought to Megan McDonald that they're just going to wait till next year. So we don't have to worry about this, it'll be next year that they'll recognize this year's fair winners. So just want to make sure that you were aware that we tabled it, tabled it, now it's not going to be presented. All right, moving on to item number seven is the Smith County Health Department Annual Report, 2017, a budget fiscal year 2018-19, given to Mr. Michael Raven. Is anybody seeing Mr. Raven? If not, he was able to do this in our budget finance beginning of the meeting, and it can be just information for you, goes through the different amounts of money that the state of Tennessee puts into the health department, what we contribute as far as the local base, and also the amount of people that go and receive services at Smith County Health Department. And for those of you that don't know where it's at, 251 Joy Alford Way is over South Carthage across from the old hospital, now is the assisted living beside the Smith County Career Center and Senior Center. So it's in that area. We built that complex and it's meant very good for the people of Smith County. So health department helps a lot of people that might not be able to be helped, and even some people that have insurance, they'll take insurance too, so it's a great benefit to our community. Have any questions on the health department report? All right. Item number eight, Ms. Shanda Key, I know she's here. She'll come forward. Do you have your, copy your report?
No, sir.
Okay, you're just going to give a verbal report?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Shanda Key, I'll let you introduce yourself and tell them who you're with.
Okay, my name is Shanda Key, I'm the coordinator for the Smith County Recovery Court, and I kind of just want to give an overview of what our program is and what it does for the county. Over the last several decades, the jail and prison population in our country have risen beyond capacity. The United States spends over $70 billion on corrections and incarcerations annually. One in five incarcerated people are locked up for drug offense, and nearly 50% of jail and prison inmates are clinically addicted to drugs and/or alcohol. Between 60% and 80% of drug abusers commit a new crime, typically drug-driven, after release from prison, and approximately 95% return to drug use following release. Recovery courts confront these issues head-on by using the leverage of the courts to keep seriously drug-addicted offenders in intensive treatment and under close supervision. Recovery courts strike the proper balance between the need to protect community safety and the need to improve public health, between the need for treatment and the need to hold people accountable for their actions. The Smith County Misdomina Recovery Court is committed to assisting with intervention, treatment, and rehabilitation of nonviolent drug offenders who desire to change their lives and break the cycle of drug dependency. We provide assistance and resources to help our participants become productive members of society. The services of our program here in Smith County are provided at no cost to the participant. We currently have nine participants who are active in our program, seven in the community, and two are receiving inpatient treatment at New Leaf in Cookeville. We have several that are on the referral list. The referrals kind of take a while to sort through, and we conduct assessments, and we have a team of people who meet every Wednesday here and sort through those referrals and decide who meets our eligibility criteria and who doesn't. So that's kind of that process.
And there is a difference between the misdemeanor recovery court program and the felony?
Correct. In our program, we only accept people who have misdemeanors, and they have to be nonviolent. So we don't accept anyone who has domestic violence convictions, assault charges, and things like that, and no sales charges.
And the felony recovery court, though, which is actually, we can have participants in Wilson County, from Smith County?
Correct. We have a 15th traditional district recovery court as well, who accepts felony participants from Smith County. Okay?
And how long have you been with the program?
Since June of last year, and I've been the coordinator about, I think, three months. I started out as the case manager.
And you may say this in your presentation, but General Sessions Judge Michael Collins, this was started under his tenure?
Correct, about three years ago.
Okay, all right. You have questions for Ms. Key? She did a great job. She's, she's in the courthouse on the third floor of the courthouse, that's where your office is held. So in the oldest store courthouse, currently we have a veteran service officer, we have the Georgia Recovery Court Office, we have the archives, and then the TBI offices. So there are still people that call it their office and their home. So I appreciate your presentation, Norm.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Did you say how many have graduated from the recovery court?
Now, the last time I looked at the numbers, I believe it's seven. Is that sent that right? We actually have an upcoming graduation, May 30th. I sent out lots of invitations, I hope everybody will receive their invitation, but I would send an open invitation for anyone who's not received an invitation, May 30th at 11:00 a.m. here in this courtroom. We have one participant graduating.
It's pretty amazing to come to the graduation. I think I've interviewed one of them, and it's amazing to see people's lives have changed. Most of the people that go through this recovery court program, they've probably lost their job, they've probably, if they've had children, they've lost their children, they've just burned a lot of bridges between their mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters, and things like that. And when you see moms and dads, sisters and brothers, and children come back in and support them, and then when they get out of the program, just the advancements that we see, I just think it's an amazing program, just wish there could be, as I described it a lot of times, it seemed like we've got many falls into the problem with addiction, but can we ever retrieve a few out of that? But there's more that go in and come out, and it's, it is a big issue, not just in Smith County, but all over the United States, and so we're glad what you do and what you do for those that are willing to participate.
I would like to add that we are working on expanding our program here in Smith County. We try to be a pretty progressive team, and we're going to work on changing policies and procedures that will hopefully allow us to offer the program to more people. Currently, we only accept people who have been revoked to serve, so they've tried probation, they've tried, you know, doing it out in the community, and they've violated probation for whatever reason, and so they have been revoked to serve out their sentence in jail. So currently, those are the only participants that we accept, so we're open to extending that and trying to help more people.
And it's a team decision of who gets in the program, who stays in the program, if you have people that do things another way, too. Everybody work together to try to?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, we have about, the judge always says 20, but I think it's more along the lines of 13 to 16 every Wednesday that meet. We have really strong support from the community. The jail is a huge supporter of our program, probation. We all come together and make decisions together.
Probably just hold search 20.
Well, I think probably we have 20 listed somewhere, but we have an average of 13 to 16 who show up every week.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Have a good night. You're welcome to stay with us. All right. Item number nine, approval of the March 12, 2018 Smith County Commission Meeting minutes. There was one correction you should have received to hand out tonight. If you'll look on page, looks on page seven, is that there? Yes, under page seven, about middle of the page, it had, talked about a resolution 03-2018-07. No, I didn't scan for it, I'm sorry. It's actually at page eight. I'll catch up in a minute. Resolution 03-2018-10, request for the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation widen from three lanes to five lanes, 1.24 miles, State Route 53, four, or State Route 141 to James Z Drive, that's supposed to be from, so that's another correction. I didn't see that. All right. The motion was made, and it said on the original minutes that you received that the motion passed unanimously. Mr. Matthew Inyard caught this, he was, he had abstained from voting because he's an employee of the Tennessee Department of Transportation, so we have listed now 22 voted in favor of the resolution, and Matthew Inyard abstained from voting due to a conflict of employment with T-Dot. So the other correction to be made on the instead of form to from, and plus that, unless there's any other correction to be made. If not, I entertain a motion to approve as the correction that I stated.
Motion to approve.
Got the motion by Matthew Inyard, second by Carolyn Bowles. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Items 10 through 18 are minutes from meetings we've had, subcommittee minutes from the past, from our March meeting till now. Are there any, any of the chairpersons here that want to speak to any of the minutes? Are there any questions on any of the minutes? Reason I put those in there, I think I tell this every time, not everybody serves on the committee, so it's good to read those minutes to know what's going on within those other subcommittees. All right, moving on to item 19, found pages 57 through 58. Each year, Ms. Leanne Williams, trustee of Smith County, turns over the real estate and public utility tax roll report to the county commission, and this is saying that she has collected all that she can collect, and the rest of it is turned over to the clerk and master's office, and it gives you a total on page 57, that she hereby certifies the amount of $143,948, is the entire amount of delinquent real estate taxes, and this is for the year 2016. We do need to get a motion to approve per report.
So she does approve?
Motion for Charles Kent, that's second. Second, Joey Nixon, sorry, I'll get you next down. All right, got a motion and a second to approve item number 19, 2016 Real Estate and Public Utility Tax Roll Report. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, it isn't a money item, so we'll roll call this.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowles?
Yes.
Daniel Cripps?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Inyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knackel?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gross. Motion carries, by the way. Mr. Gross?
So good after late, and they're asking these six officers to sign off on the other.
Okay, we got you. Okay. All right, thank you, David. So six of you, these six come through, all right. Also, I don't want anybody to think these are, these are not, it's not saying that these are not going to be continued, try to be collected, because let me go to the clerk and master's office, they're continuing to collect, be collected, and you'll look, if you look on your budget, as far as the county's concerned, it'll show you the clerk and master's collection, so it doesn't stop. Mr. Bellator, once it doesn't, if it's not collected there, I guess property is forced to be sold, is that correct, to collect taxes?
Correct. After a certain amount of time, it collapses, then we can, we can hold over a line, just sell certain properties. Assuming they don't pay it off and they hand it out.
All right, thanks, sir. Items 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24, I'm going to let Mr. Daisy Dent speak to us about that. Mr. Daisy, if you would, go ahead.
All right. Item number 20 is the quarterly financial reports for the Smith County Finance Office. It's on page? I don't know about that. Item number 20 is on page 59 through 69. It's the quarterly financial statement for the Smith County Finance Office for the month ending, quarter ending March 2018. It includes funds 101, 122, 131, 151, 156, 191, and 207. Anybody having questions? If not, on page 70 through 73, you have the same report for funds 141 and 143 from the school. And Norman Mitchell's here, if anybody has any questions for the schools.
Can we go back to the last one?
Yes.
On 4417, Ms. Leanne's refunds, that actual $140,000, estimated is 11,800, what's, nobody's high?
Which budget are you looking at, which, which fund?
101.
4417.
4417.
And what's your question again?
Ms. Leanne's refunds.
I see that, compared to what it was budgeted to, that we received $140,000.
If I'm not mistaken, that's the contribution we received from the highway department and the solid waste fund for the central house accounting.
That's a contribution?
That is a contribution.
That's Ms. Leanne's refunds, 4417.
Oh, 40, and he's looking at?
4417.
Okay, I'm not bad, I'm sorry.
Is that on page 60?
I do know, yes. I do know that we received about $40,000 of it back from the 911 as a refund, where they purchased a vehicle for Jeff Proctor, and they ran the expenditure through here. We paid for the vehicle and they, they paid us back, and I do know that's worth, that $40,000, it wouldn't have been an original amount there. Michael, can you think of anything else that would have been large amount? I'll be glad to look back at it.
Did you leave your computer on or you can access it?
I have, I was going to use somebody's laptop, I'll be able to?
You might could do that while we're doing the rest of the meeting.
That's not my laptop, though.
When you probably get a whole one. Eugene, she can access her local government program off of another computer if she gets logged on to the internet, and she can find out the answer to that. Billy, we'll come back to that.
Is there any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll move on to page 74 for Resolution 1, budget amendments to the general fund. And most of these are working within their budgets or before their budgets, and I'm going to go over the fund balance decreases and then I'll go to ask any questions that you have. On the 53310 general sessions, judge budget on page 75, you'll see a fund balance decrease of $4,543, and also a fund balance decrease of $826 under 54240. Both of those amounts are being requested by Judge Collins to be reduced from alcohol and drug reserve and assist with the purchase of drug screens for juvenile services, and I'll leave in general sessions that some of those drug screens are going to be used between the drug board also. In 54310 for fire prevention and control, the $41,723 is for the air filling station that was purchased. In 54710, that's one of the Drug Prevention Coalition grant budgets, they received $110 additional donated money there. And then on page 76, in 56500 libraries, there is a revenue increase of $1,221 for a tech grant that they received. And that is all of the fund balance decreases and revenue increases. Anybody having questions about any of those amendments? On page 78, there is a resolution for amendments to solid waste fund 207, and all of theirs are working within their budget. Anybody having questions on that? On page 79, there's a resolution number three for the highway department. They're requesting to decrease their fund balance and increase all these different lines to try and finish out the rest of the year. Anybody has any questions? Mr. Cogbo is here. Is that where you wanted to start?
Yes. And all of those have been voted on by the Republican Finance Committee, correct?
Yes, they're all in the present budget.
If we'll hold off on the vote on this, we can answer that, we can answer that question on the 4417. What is the amount, so there's more money that's come into that line than what we had voted before. We only voted for $11,000, I think it shows $140,000. It's additional money we've got in for something, and more than likely, we've done a basic amendment to put that in the expenditure line already, but we want to get an answer before we vote on that. Any other questions? And we'll come back to that in a moment. All right. Item number 25 and item number 26, this is a application, a resolution to allow us to apply for litter and trash collection grant through T-Day, actually through T-Dot, sorry, Tennessee Department of Transportation, I'm going to tell them I forgot. Also, item number 26, this appointment of myself for the term of six years as a member of the North Central Solid Waste Planning Board, that is the typical term for the county mayor, and I know I'm not going to be here for six years, and I'm not going to serve on that board for six years. Whoever is elected county mayor will assume that position, and then you'll have to come back and do another resolution, but I've got to do that now because my term is expired. We have any business to do between now and the end of August, and I've got to be able to do that. So I'm asking for items 25 and 26 to be grouped together and voted on together. Anybody want to request either one of us to be pulled out and voted on separately? Any questions on either item? North Central, by the way, the North Central Planning Board, that's due to solid waste, made up of Macon, Smith, and Troutwood County, we have turned in our numbers on how much trash comes in, what we divert from the landfill, inside recycling numbers, those kind of things. We do that and give that report to the state of Tennessee once a year. Nobody want to pull out separately? No questions? I hear a motion to approve items 25 and 26.
Motion to approve.
Item 25, 26.
Motion by Lynn Reese, here, second.
Sir.
Second by David Gross. Thank you, Norman. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like a sign? Motion carries. Item number 27 is Resolution 6, dealing with that EESI program. I have with us now Mr. Robert Lawson, if you want to stand up there, please, with Johnson and Crowe, appreciate you being here. I told him I didn't think he'd, he didn't want to give a speech tonight, y'all heard enough about this program. We're going to try to get this final piece of paper passed. We had an agreement passed in our last commission meeting, but we didn't have a long resolution passed, so in this- So in this, uh, Mr. Beller, you may want to go over the agreement with the county mayor that's between Smith County School System, Smith County Government. But the resolution is what was given to us by Johnson Control, was also that was given to you, Mr. Beller. And you have approved it legalized, everything looks good.
Yes, sir.
All right. What about, you might want to go with the agreement about the payment?
Uh, remember, Adam, just, well, we, we're the ones signing the loan documentation, uh, once it's approved, which I brought a little loan charge that they provided me. But once it, uh, for lack of a better description, once it's approved, the school will be reimbursing us for, for the loan amounts that we would pay annually, um, uh, to repay the loan. That's all that agreement is. And I've got to get that approval, that approved through, uh, their, their attorney. And, uh, we, it was one I granted, and don't see any real issues with it, at least they've not come back to me with any changes. So I expect that we signed it, it's all.
All right. And I talked to Mr. Joe Bond, uh, today, he talked about funds that are going to be coming available real soon. Uh, this program is a three million dollar program, is that correct, through, for the Smith County School System, upstate lighting and other electoral items there that were there. So we're asking for approval of the last piece of documentation, Resolution Five, that's two thousand eighteen dash forty-six, and the agreement.
Motion, Jennifer, second.
Motion by Thomas Allen, give a second, by Mark Jones. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowles?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Enyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knapple?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight, asking for approval of updated lease agreement for copies from the mayor's office and finance department. Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Have a good night.
We'll get busy.
All right. We have a correction. If you look on page eighty-eight, it's kind of summary. What we actually have been quoted, what we brought to you, uh, was a copy of M X M five sixty-four N, which did fifty-six copies per minute. That copy got discontinued, and the new model, the M X M, not sixty-fifty, it's sixty copies per minute. And it actually was the same price, I believe, is correct. And we're just need to get that updated because you have to approve any lease agreement until we go into it. So we're asking approval, uh, item number twenty-eight, approval for the lease agreement for the mayor's office and finance department.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Matthew Enyard?
Second.
Second by Pam, um- Okay, Miss Pam Billington. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, roll call.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowles?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Enyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knapple?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Motion carries. If it's all right with you all, I'd like to skip over items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. And that's, that's, that is perfect time, got to give it just a, figure it out.
No, I have the amounts and the dates that we had larger amounts to come in, but I'll need to actually go pull the receipt.
For your, for your amounts and maybe-
Uh, send you one thousand dollars in December to have been sixty-something up and on. And a few thousand dollars, I think, are in March, which would be about forty-five thousand dollars up and on. I'd rather look into it and know for sure before I give an answer.
Okay. Uh, we're to item twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, which is our internal control assessment. And you've covered that, that's on pages ninety-one through one twenty-seven.
Um, I think that June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen, a law became effective that required county offices to perform an internal control assessment. Um, the goal of that was to help increase the effectiveness and efficiency of each office, to decrease the risk of, um, of fraud and waste of county assets, and to, um, ensure accountability and reliability in financial reporting. So all the offices that have done that have submitted those. Again, they have to be updated annually, and any changes take place within the office, they're supposed to be noted.
Uh, I had a discussion on the way over here too, uh, with Mr. Jeff Crockett, EMS director. We feel like there's going to be one more than come in June, because that's not in this, this list, and we feel like there, there's got to be one there, so that's one that's been overlooked. But the internal control assessment, as you mentioned, is just a requirement, and we, we document what everybody's responsible to do, and that's the procedures that we took, that we follow. Any, have, anyone have any question on any of these? I think there was a correction on one of them, actually.
Uh, correction needs to be made on page one twenty-six, under contracts, uh, for the, internal control for the Smith County Libraries. Uh, it says, uh, in the paragraph, uh, first sentence, it says, uh, Smith County Executive, uh, not approved, not the Smith County Mayor.
All right, did you see any other corrections? No? Anyone else see anything that might have been a typo, or anything that you might have thought out of order? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, which are internal control assessment policies for the trustee, finance office, certain court clerk, highway department, mayor's office, clerk, and master, and the library.
Motion to approve with correction.
Got you. Got a motion to approve with one correction, here, second.
Second.
Second of Thomas Allen, give the motion, been made by Matthew Enyard, second of Thomas Allen. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, all members in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like a sign. That's what it takes care of a lot of papers. That took up the biggest part of our, our documents. All right, um, Mr. Bass, I'm just, I'm going to ask all of you, if you would. I, I can't answer your question right now, but I can tell you there's more money than what we invested for, and there is a reason for it, just off the top of my head, I cannot tell you. She knows that those, one amount was seventy thousand, one was fifty. I'm sitting there trying to think it was a reimbursement or miscellaneous refund or something, and you would think that would stick out, but we're dealing with a lot of different money, so it's just hard to come up with sometimes. But I would ask that we approve it, and I will get the answer back to you. If you don't like my answer, I guess you can not prove the next financial report. I don't know, but it is what it is, and if we have made an error that's went in the wrong line item, we can correct that too, okay? So if we would, let's go back to, um, page, um, two of your agenda. Items twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, that was the financial reports and the budget amendment resolutions. Are there any other questions? If not, would somebody give me a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Charles Kent, second by Frank Woodard. Frank, you did second, everyone? You had your hand up. All right. Got a motion and second to approve items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. And I promise you, I'll get you that answer back, and I'll probably find, I'll probably go back to office and find it tonight, so I can call all of them back to you. All right. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowles?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Enyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knapple?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Now, we have that same problem with every revenue line, it's really in good shape and, uh, over what we invested. All right, item number thirty-six, we're back to it now. Ask for approval of the design code for Baker Property Industrial Development, Battle Engineering. Back in, uh, November, December, we, uh, we, of course, applied for the site development grant. When we did that, we had to have an engineer, and we went through the request for qualification portion of that required by the State of Tennessee. Had engineers that submitted qualifications. Mr. Gary Battleman was chosen out of that request for qualifications. He's actually been the one that's been working with us, kind of a regular writer for some time, and honestly, still has. I think he was paid a little bit of money with the three-star grant when he first started, but, uh, the major portion of it's going to be coming real soon. I know y'all, I got, I tell a lot of you, and you saw it in the paper, but we received a one million dollar site development grant to the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Economic and Community Development. So I would, we need to get this, uh, behind us when we get, uh, as far as the contract with our engineer, because we, we've got steps coming. Uh, still, everything's online, we'll close on this property by June the third. Uh, we're waiting now on the certificate of purpose, purpose and necessity. They had four different questions out of an eight-hundred-page document. We didn't fill out four questions, it's too bad. We got those turned around, and they were satisfied with those answers. I hope we'll receive an answer from them, uh, this week. Of course, the, uh, worst thing can happen, which I don't think is going to happen, if they say they don't approve it, then we can't close the loan. Because without that approval, we cannot purchase the property. Uh, but everything looks good, haven't heard any negative toward it. Matter of fact, they received, uh, a couple, and they, they said that ours was well documented, and Mr. G O did a really good job putting it together and trying to find your way through that eight-hundred-page document. I'm glad they can find it, because it's, the, the index on it is not like anything I would have written. I mean, it's, uh, it's got different sections, different, other different sections, then that section, it's hard to find your way in. Uh, but they really, I really think it's, we got it. So I'm asking for approval on item thirty-six, which is found on page one twenty-eight through one twenty-nine, and this was figured into the estimate that we gave to the State of Tennessee.
Motion to approve.
We did that. Motion by Mark Jones, second by Tom Skil. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. By the way, before I forget it, again, I want to take this opportunity to thank the Department of Security for being here tonight, covering the county commission meeting, and also Smith County Insider for being here, uh, covering all the visitors we have with us tonight. Thank you for being here tonight. Items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine are all forms that are required by USDA Rule Development, which is where we're getting the one point one million dollars, uh, to purchase the industrial property off of. You have a form four hundred dash one, a four hundred dash four, and then there is a loan resolution. All this is found on page one thirty through one thirty-one. Uh, the equal opportunity agreement, basically same with for everybody, an equal opportunity on so, than Title VI, Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-four, we do, uh, meet all those standards and those, uh, those requirements. And Resolution seven is the USDA Rule Development, uh, loan resolution. Now, there are other bond resolutions below this, but there's many, many pieces of this thing, and it amazes me how much paperwork there is involved with closing this loan. But I'm asking for approval of items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. If there are no questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Matthew Enyard, second by Charles Kent. Of course, these are items, we've already approved the one point one million dollars, we already approved the contracts, we, these are just some of the final steps we have to make with them. Are there any questions? Or any, anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowles?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Enyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knapple?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Motion carries. If you're looking at items forty and forty-one, they do look similar. Um, we go through USDA Rule Development for the money, but then Bass, Mary, and Sam, which is the bond closing agency, they worked with our local attorney, uh, Mr. Brandon Beller, on all these closing documents. Mr. Brandon is working on a preliminary title of opinion, title search, I guess you could say. You got any, all right, that's a good attorney right there. And then, uh, the Bond Counsel, actually, is one who does all the documentation. Item forty has to be passed first before item forty-one can be passed. Item forty is passed, and it's called an initial bond resolution, and the reason for that, there has to be a twenty-day comment period from the time that this is passed until we can actually go and borrow the money. But that's what the initial bond resolution is, and then the real one, I guess you could say, the bond resolution is item number forty-one, which is Resolution nine. But this is still all digging with the industrial property, nothing has changed, one point one million dollars, a hundred and sixteen acres of land. Uh, I think we had one of the pieces property we thought was twenty, ended up being sixteen acres, and that was the agreement, twenty thousand dollars per acre. The other one was a hundred and one acres, something like that, and it was that one million dollar, which is ten thousand dollars per acre. So we're just asking for approval of the initial bond resolution first, which is Resolution zero five dash two thousand eighteen dash oh eight. What's the will of the commission on approval for this?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by David Gross, two second, by Mark Jones. Motion by David, Commissioner David Gross, second by Mark Jones, for Resolution zero five dash two thousand eighteen dash oh eight. Anyone want to speak to the motion? Not roll call, please.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Glenn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowles?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Inyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number forty-one is the bond resolution authorizing the issue of sale payment of one point one million dollars of bond for Smith County, Tennessee. Authorizing the issue of bond anticipation notes prior to the issuance of, of the bonds, and authorizing the levy taxes paid by bonds and notes. What's the will of the commission on resolution nine?
Motion to approve, second.
Who did it? Oh, David, David Gross with the motion, second, Thomas Gibbs. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, roll call.
Mark Jones?
Yes.
Lynn Reese?
Yes.
Larry Edelman?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Jimmy Winfrey?
Yes.
Carolyn Bowes?
Yes.
Daniel Cricks?
Yes.
Pam Billington?
Yes.
Matthew Inyard?
Yes.
Ron Cowan?
Yes.
Linda Nixon?
Yes.
Billy Woodard?
Yes.
Barbara Knappel?
Yes.
Andy Rutherford?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Joey Nixon?
Yes.
Tommy Bane?
Yes.
Dennis Hackett?
Yes.
Thomas Gibbs?
Yes.
David Gross?
Yes.
Frank Woodard?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm going to call on Mr. Bill Woodard just now to go over item number forty-two, fiscal string and the official government fiscal confirmation letter.
Okay, it's actually pretty simple, uh, it's a requirement of the three-star star program. And, uh, what it basically means is that we, as a body, went over our debt management policy, our annual cash flow forecast, and confirmation of documented internal controls. And, uh, before we can receive any money from three-star, or actually even, uh, send an invoice and, and get anything back, we have to make sure we have this fiscal confirmation, have it presented to court and approved by court.
On top of that, uh, days that we went over this today, these items that are already been presented, have already approval, and this is just that final confirmation letter. What's the will of the commission?
Motion to approve.
A motion, Charles Kent, second by Matthew Inyard. Proven item number forty-two, fiscal string and official government fiscal confirmation letter for the three-star program. Anyone want to speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.